I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start with roll call, Dan Roddyhouse, John Estrich.
Yep.
Bridgette Hayes, I'm here. Curtis Ward, Rick Whitaker.
Here.
We do that according. Let's start with approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from February 5th as presented by Gina.
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Sir.
Rick seconded. Are there any questions for Gina or changes? All in favor? All in favor, Rick?
Yeah.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next is approval of claims and payroll. Claims. The total for claims is three hundred and ten thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty cents. Gina, do you have anything to point out for us for claims?
Some of the... There were other claims that we paid that are not usual claims. So one was the whole project one. And then also the free fund of fiscal spending accounts. And then the purchase of the garage. That was approved last week.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the claims. Is there a second? Rick seconded. All in favor?
No.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I do it.
Oh. Next is the payroll. This is payroll ending February 10th for a total of forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents with no overtime. Is there a motion to approve the payroll?
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second? All seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is Sheer Designs Street closure, Eighth Street. Do you want to come up to the podium?
Okay.
Just tell us what you want to do.
Make sure the lights are ready before we... I think I turned it on, but make sure the light is ready on the microphone.
Yeah, it is. Go ahead and state your name.
Janette Hoffbauer. We were asking if we could during the eclipse on April 8th shut down the street of the corner of Eighth and Mill to Short Street. Just because we are planning an event and to help settle traffic through that area for people walking, making it a little more safer for people.
Are you going to have, I mean, what are you going to have?
We are having vendors. We got food truck, a bakery coming down, a mobile boutique. Trying to plan like a little event like most of other places here in Franklin County are doing. So, yeah.
Rocky, any issues with closing the street? Anybody have any questions or?
So Sheer Designs is really, I own that whole corner spot between Eighth and Short Street. And so there's only one house that's been abandoned for about eight or nine years that is there. So there's no other, you know, homes or anything that that would affect other than, you know, the state or the town that comes through there.
It's a big day, Rocky, so I just want to make sure you can get in and out if you need to.
It is a big day, yeah.
Don't come around us after.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's it.
I'll make the motion to approve the closure.
John made a motion to approve the closure of Eighth Street from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on April 8th.
I'm going to say.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
I do have a question. She's in a request house for various locos. Can you assist with that that day or?
I think we should have. We should have.
Okay.
We should?
Okay. Do you have extras?
Yes.
Okay. You're not blocking any other streets?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Next is the Frontier letter of support. So this is a letter of support that we're a little late in submitting it for Frontier to get involved with the Next Level Connections Broadband Infrastructure Grant Program to deploy fiber broadband infrastructure in Franklin County. This is in addition to what Spectrum has been doing all over the county now. Frontier wants to get some, a piece of the pie. And so this is just our letter to them saying we support your efforts to get the grant. That's all it is. And this would obviously be able to provide competition with Spectrum and great plans, we hope, in town. So. Any questions about the letter of support?
Do you need a motion?
Take a motion to?
Make motion to submit the letter.
John made a motion to approve me signing the letter and submitting it to Frontier. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department v. Raffel. This is a letter that they now need for to get their, I guess their gambling license, Gina, is that right? I guess in the past the-
Their event permit, yeah.
Their what?
Their event permit.
Event permit, okay.
Baby license, I guess it's called.
Okay, yeah. So I guess in the past the council used to write a resolution, but now I guess the state just wants a letter that says we... This letter says we're donating the use of the Shilling Center to the Brookfield Volunteer Fire Department on September 21st, 2024. And I see that Mark is on Zoom, so if anybody has any questions. I think also he wants to close Ninth Street on that day as well.
Do you feel that?
So can I get a motion to approve the, the letter donating the Shilling Center and the closure of Ninth Street?
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Franklin County Public Library Story Walk Day on April 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
I don't think anybody's here from the library. Amanda Gerbert sent a email request. She said two years ago that they co-hosted a story walk day in the Parkin lot by the girls softball fields. They had Kona Ice present and encouraged families to walk the story walk. They said they also had several local resource agencies set up with tables and games and activities for the children. She said they had over a hundred people attend and had positive feedback from the event. So they're looking to do this event in the parking lot down by the river on April 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. I did check with the girls youth softball league. There wasn't any issues the last time with practices or parking or anything of that nature, so they should be okay. But I did double check with SIRPC on the timing of the grant construction for the parking lot itself. And she said this event date should be well ahead of commencing the construction. She said that will start sometime in May.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Gina? I'll entertain a motion to approve the Franklin County Public Library Story Walk Day, April 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Lower Park.
Make a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is parking meters. Mr. Gilman.
You have to excuse my rough draw, I can get some message across, but I'm not dressed for it. I'm George Gilman. I myself and two sons. We own Georgia's Pharmacy at Fifth and Main. And recently the parking meters down Fifth Street, East and West, have been removed. That's quite detrimental to our parking. Most of our customers are elderly like myself over age 65. And I know the meters are still on Main Street, but I'm sure we've all tried to get in and out of a vehicle on Main Street. You gotta watch your doors. You can't slip. You can't miss, grab something to help you get in and out. So I'd like for the parking meters to be put back in place. I've got a diagram here that the parking meters would go from Main Street to the Brookfield Theater, then pass the theater all the way to the bank on the side where the theater is and where the pharmacy meter is. On the other side, the meters would just be where the angle parking is. The parking that goes to the Valley House is their property. And there's more than four spots in there on the angle, uh, angle drawing. There's probably about six spots there, but I think, and I think the spots on the other side of the street are okay. Other than that, I want the meters back. Questions? Comments?
Rocky and I, Rocky and I talked about maybe putting some signs in. Have you looked into that, Rocky?
Yes.
Looked into what again? I'm sorry.
Like if we put huge signs to put out there on the side of the building saying business parking only during these hours, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, the good, the bad, it's notifiable. The bad, you tow it away and what is it, a hundred dollars to tow a car? I have no idea. We've made a lot of enemies and, and it's economic hardship on a person can be.
It wouldn't be towing. What would be would be a ticket. And I talked to Chief Mitchum and I would like to do warning tickets first for a while. And then if people continue to park there at the wrong times, start giving tickets.
And we're not against that parking there. Between 8:00 and 6:00 when we're open, I would like, you know, if you do it, the signs say half hour. Secondly, though, who's going to monitor the people parking? I mean, I'll, my staff will be glad to do it.
Uh, I, Dr. Chief Mitchum again, when we have this, he's just going to have to, his officers are going to have to watch that look closely Friday first. And I think that once we start getting that tickets and everything, it'll be a word of the process and I don't think you'll have any problems. If you do, we can always put the parking meters back in.
Well, then let's do parking meters first. We won't have to go through that stuff. What I like about parking meters is they're either there, it's a quarter, a half hour, whatever. And people are used to it.
I don't know about you. I've visited small tourist towns all around and none of them have parking meters. A lot of them have two-hour parking limits, but none of them have parking meters. And I think we're sending the wrong message to our tourists when we have parking meters out there. I think we're-
It's a point of view.
And I, I just, I would like to try it without them for a little bit, see what happens.
So then if put signs up, we, we get with Mr. Mitchum and work out, assist him, say, hey, here, can you come down, check this out, check this out?
Yes.
Andy, is it legal for us to put a sign up that says business parking only?
I think, and John and Andy had me about, I think you would want to adopt ordinance whereby you could designate certain parking two-hour limit or you could designate, I mean, for a pharmacy, you could have a couple of spots that were fifteen minutes, sorry. John, did you know me about this? I was out of town Friday and I didn't get back until yesterday evening, so I hadn't had a chance to work on it. But I think you could adopt an ordinance whereby you could have parking spots designated as two-hour parking or, you know, for a pharmacy, if you want to do a fifteen-minute parking, you know, a couple of spots for fifteen minutes for, or somebody's just parking, running, pick up the prescription and run back out. I think it's, it's the, it's the town's parking spots, so I think the town can regulate it. Just we would have to give ordinance.
An ordinance to do that?
Mm-hmm.
We can't just put a sign up?
I would, if you just put a sign up right now, there's no recourse. The ordinance is what establishes the recourse. Like John was talking about maybe a warning ticket first before we start actually taking the people. The ordinance would spell out what those-
Right. Otherwise, the police wouldn't have the authority to ticket if there's no law against it. A sign is not a law. We have to.
Now, I did notice today, first time I've noticed it, on the Valley House side that faces the hill, they did put up signs on their pillars that say, you know, Valley House Parking Only. And when I read it, I went, damn. But anyway, that, that is up. But I think they own those spots. I don't know how far the, the town owns off in the center of the street. So the places he put the, the signs might be Valley House Parking, might not be. I don't know. I'm not here to get in my, in trouble. We're just telling you what I see.
It's my understanding that we, the, the town owns the entire, all the parking, behind the Valley House on the side of it. Underneath it is theirs.
Yeah, but how far on the Progress Street side, do they own up to the curb then?
I don't think so, no.
I mean, when I say they, the town.
Oh, yes, yes, the town, yeah. So those are, that's why all those, we were the ones that designed that, that paid for the whole.
Right, yeah.
Designed all the, the spaces.
He's talking about the loss that are against the building.
It's not in the, it's not in the drive, not in the drive-through side. It's on the side that's facing the hill. It's on Progress Street, that side.
Yeah, so again, my understanding is that we own all the spaces. That's why we paid for the, that's why the grant that we used to pay that was, you know, a state grant. We paid for all the, the spaces to be marked. The Valley House didn't, didn't. So I, I don't know if we've ever done that for our personal lot.
We just had Tim look at it the other day because we had a gentleman questioning and I thought he meant on the hillside that there were signs. But Tim said the ones on the building, I must admit, I might have misunderstood, but I thought he said those did go with that house. We own the ones on the side of the street.
Then why did we pay, pay, pay their lot?
Again, I was just saying what Tim had said. I, I don't know for sure. So maybe it's something we need to look into.
I think we need to look into that.
Well, I know in the-
I think that's separate.
In the past with businesses, it's been, do we own the sidewalk? Does the town own the sidewalk? Do we own from the center of the street over 20 feet or however many feet is, don't we? So I'm, you know, I remember just some history of, of being on Main Street where it's been an issue, who owns what. And I think the other side pushes to one side, who's got the money to pay for it. But it's just my opinion.
Well, what is the, I mean, I, I personally didn't want the meters to come out. I would have rather spoken to you first to find out what the problems were to see if we could come up with an agreeable solution before we did that, but the council voted to remove them, so we are here now. What, what would the council like to suggest? Because at this point, we have to all agree. If we don't, then-
I would like Andy to work on ordinance, who does it as soon as we can. We could see what it is from there.
What would you like to do?
I think we should start with a sign first and if it don't work, with the meter back. I mean, personally, when we agreed to take these out, there was no meters here.
Yeah.
They had removed them.
No.
Yeah, they removed them because they didn't line up with these spots. I just happened to see them that day that they wasn't there. And I talked to Mr. Gilman about this. They had removed them and then come back and put, put them where they lined up with the spots because they was in there when the spot was originally squared with his building. Once they put them on a slope, they didn't line up.
Right.
And they wasn't there.
Oh, yeah.
So in, in my mind, it didn't, wasn't an issue because it was not there.
It took a while for the parks to come in. Rocky ordered those. It just took several months. Finally, 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 they came in. Finally, he put them up. And then the very next week, I think it was, the council decided to take them down. So Rocky was working on it.
Mr. Gilman had called me on the 8th, I believe, and me and you talked and you said you was fine with a sign and see how it went. And then if it didn't go, we would do something else.
One other thing I'd like to have done, talking to, asking around, hearing things. In one community, when they slap a thing on the windshield that says you need to be moved, if they don't put, they put on one that's very sticky and it's a real pain for the people to get it off their windshield. I would, I just, it sends a message. We're serious. I, you know, the sticker I'd actually put on there, it made sense to me, but it just tells me what I'm thinking. And my thought on that also is that these people say, hey, they mean business. We're, we're going to move it. I'm sure a lot of times they'll slap something on a car and say you're going to be towed and they're going, oh, you know, we, nobody wants to tow anybody for a hundred bucks, whatever the fee is. So sometimes I think that's in the back of people's minds.
I think with the warnings, you know, you give out a warning or two and then if it continues, because I think when me and you talked, you said it was people from Valley House Parking.
Right. Yeah, if it wasn't for, yeah, nothing against them, but I mean, if it wasn't for that, that group of people being there looking for spots, it would not be an issue probably.
So do you need motion to have Andy work on ordinance?
Yeah. Yeah, we can't put signs up until we get the ordinance, just so that, you know, they, they can't enforce anything until we get the ordinance down.
And I, I just think we should start with this, with the sign before we put the meters back in. If this is not working in 30 days or whatever, we put the meters back.
But Andy said if we just put a sign and have some-
Right, we have to have the ordinance.
Yeah, so.
Right.
How long would it take you to?
I can get something together, two or three guys will get it next to me. I'll check.
It's a couple of weeks, okay?
So then you want me to get ahold of Chief of Police and go over it?
I'm-
No.
It's already done.
Oh, okay, geez. Well, thank you.
So I guess my question is before you make a, a motion is, is Mr. Gilman has a business, but what about the other businesses? Are we just going to limit this to his business and all the other businesses, they can just-
The two-hour-
They can all come in here and, and, and talk to us here?
The two-hour parking is for the town. It's not for an area. It's for the town. For the business area, wherever we designate.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
For this ordinance.
Yeah.
I say we do on both sides of Fifth Street until you get to the theater. Then just do on the theater side till you get to Progress Street and that's, because the Valley House may, they've got spots over on the other side to the south, but they may own that property. That's one of the, do you own it or do we not? And yes, it was paid by, by the town.
We're going to have to find that one out. But my question, so you want two-hour parking in front of Mr. Gilman's business?
I wouldn't. You can go less than that if you like. An hour's plenty.
Yeah.
Two-hour parking, okay.
Two hours fine. Or an hour, whatever.
Can you designate streets in the ordinance standing when you prepare it for them to review?
I think it would be drafted in a way that, you know, you could add two-hour limits or fifteen-minute limits or whatever. You could draft it. You could craft what you want to start with you wanted and then put in there that the town council would have the authority to designate the areas.
So do we have to designate the time limit in the ordinance? Or can we just say it's up to, it's up to whatever the sign says or? I'm just trying to figure out what, what we're doing for him because two hours is not, most people come into Georgia's pretty quick. That's why, you know, fifteen, thirty minutes.
Do fifteen minutes or so in these spots right here next to the building. And then the rest of it would be two hours.
I'm trying to think more than just Georgia's business. I'm trying to think of the entire town. And again, if anybody's been to small tourist towns, they usually have a two-hour parking limit. You can walk up and down, go to the restaurants, do shopping in a couple of hours. And, you know, you don't want to pay me or you don't want to do it. Trying to help business.
I'll entertain a, I don't know what, I'll entertain a motion to figure out what Andy's going to, going to do for us on Mark's second. I'd just like it to be as specific as possible.
I would suggest to ask around to other communities what they do. And then if I read you correctly, Andy, you say you can, you can modify your statement to fit the need.
Yeah.
For Brookfield. But then still, I'd say check around other communities, say, hey, you know, here's what we're doing. Got any suggestions, so forth.
And I don't, I don't really need a motion, but I can just work on the ordinance and send something out and you guys can look at it and tell me your thoughts and.
What kind of time was you talking, John, on the other side of the street here?
I was, I was thinking two hours. On David.
So I think Mr. Gilman will just have to push this into the next meeting, go get the ordinance.
Okay.
And then I will go from there.
Do you want me to show up?
Sure, if you want.
You're always wrong.
Entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is the Randolph Park Playground Equipment Options.
I'm just going to wait for one more. So I need to be tabled till the next meeting. I will be down on your order.
Is it okay for everyone to table it till the next meeting? Who you want to vote tonight?
No.
Okay.
We can vote.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Rocky. Next is Open the CCMG 2023-2 Paying Contract Bids. So we have one, two, three, four bids. One is from Cincinnati Asphalt. And this is to pay Sixth Street. Sorry, Rocky, can you remind me, is this just Sixth Street from Main to River?
That's here with the, uh, US 52 Main Street to Mill Street on Sixth Street.
Main to Mill on Sixth Street.
Yes, so then there should be 11th Street, uh, from Main Street to Fairfield Avenue.
11th Street from Main Street to Fairfield, thank you. Okay, so we have Cincinnati Asphalt. Looks like two hundred and seventeen, two hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. I guess that's it about that first page. Next one is from Hall Road. Oh, they have it listed separately. Okay, so Sixth Street from Main to Mill is a hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy cents. And 11th Street- And Eleventh Street from Main Street to Fairfield is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Two, one, twenty, four, four, seven.
One, twenty, four, four, two, point seventy, and two sixty-one, two seventy-eight, point eighty. So those together.
Three eighty-one.
Three eighty-one, thank you.
Seven, twenty-one, fifty.
Three eighty-one, seven, twenty-one, fifty is Hall Road. The next one is, um, Dave Amira. Okay, Dave Amira, Sixth Street is one of four, five forty-one, eighty. And Eleventh Street is one forty-five, zero, forty-five, point seventy. For a grand total of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven and fifty cents. Next is Primm and Sons. Eleventh Street is three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. And Sixth Street is a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars even. For a grand total of, sorry. Eleventh Street is a hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight and fifty cents. Did I say that? Nope.
You said three, or something?
My bad. That three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents is the grand total for Primm.
Um, so we have to notify, um, in depth of our award. So Rocky's gonna be reviewing these while you're meeting and at the very end, hold on, the recommendation after getting Andy review them. So I think we're meeting in time. We have to notify in depth by March first of our bidding award. And I thought we had, I was all scheduled basically. Um, so we'll have to review and then award also tonight at the end.
So while they're doing that, um, then move on to contract award for hole eleven consideration. Thirty-eight square excavating was our only bid and they sent a bid for. Option A is seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Same with option B and then option, option C is eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. And Dustin is here. Great, there you are, great. If anybody has any questions or you'd like to explain, or Ron, would you like to come on up?
Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Hi, how many clubs are we on the, uh, GM of the golf course? And I got a, um. We only had one bidder for the job and thirty-eight square. And, uh, their bid was a little higher than expected. With option one and two and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then option three would be eighty-three thousand, seven seventy-three, and that's with an AD mix. We can't get the asphalt until either late May or early summer to do the project. So I invite the town council to reject this bid and restart the bidding process at a later date. Uh, so we can get maybe another bid or two. So we can make a, an informed decision. Um, we need to alter the course over to, um, hole fourteen. Um, hole fourteen, the land dam gave way. And it's affecting the roadway. Uh, all the water from the pond flooded out and it's all imploded on itself. And we need to push, reject this bid and start working on hole fourteen. Cause if we don't do that, I think that's the critical one. Cause that bridge, um, it could get dangerous. And with, uh, State Road one closing on April ninth. Um, there's gonna be a lot of traffic. And I think we need to move quickly and go to hole fourteen. And spend all our, um, time and efforts to, uh, hole fourteen instead of hole eleven. And that's why I wanna reject the bid for now. And then we can reopen it later on in the season. But, um, right now it's just, I, I'm, I'm worried about that road more than I am one hole. I wanna fix the other two holes, so. So I would invite you to town to, uh, decide or, or vote and reject the first bid if you would. And that's really all I have.
Thank you. Dustin, would you like to say anything?
I don't disagree with it at all. The, the dam is, is probably part of our building, the hillside. And, and working that hillside a little later date here is probably better.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments?
I made a motion to reject the bid.
John made a motion to, uh, reject the bid for hole eleven from thirty-eight square excavating. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded on a favor. All opposed. Motion carried. So we're gonna reject your bid, Dustin. Sorry about that, but. Be in tune for hole fourteen, which I'm, I'm hoping that we bid out here in a month or so. Okay, thank you so much for coming. Next is the park rental agreement.
So I had asked Andy for a template for, um, some of our groups that use the, the park for, um, activities, particularly like the softball fields, um, baseball fields, um, football and large events. We don't really have a formal agreement in place. And I'd like to get back to having a formal agreement and having them come from council on an annual basis so we know who's using what and when. Um, I think we kinda just let the girls softball league kinda take care, we just clear the scheduling. Um, we've had instances of damage, so I think it's probably a better idea that we get a better gauge of who's using it and when, so we can know who to be held responsible, uh, for damages. Um, I kinda feel like that has followed maybe sometimes on the softball organization and it might not be in the girls softball, um, youth league. So this was just a draft of something that we could look at. Um, I do think that Rocky has a set of rules, um, that maybe we need to attach specifically for those types of events. Um, just maintenance of restrooms, clean up trash after themselves. Make sure the dugouts and stuff are picked up and cleaned up. Um, but this is something I would like to instill before the season starts. So maybe like if we could finalize it sometime and then approve it for March. I do have a request already from one, um, from one virtual softball tournament in the fall. Um, and I saw Crystal Robinson, the president, the girls who softball league, she's on board with us as well, so she would be on the calendar. And, um, request her dates for their meetings as well. So I don't know if you guys had any suggestions or changes to this, or if you want a chance to look it over some more.
I personally would like to have someone look it over.
So Andy, just a quick question about the alcohol, um, paragraph. Um, it says no alcohol sales are allowed in, in the park. Is that, is that right? Is that, is that normal? We don't allow, um.
Actually, this was geared more towards a facility rental. Um, so I tried to take out what wasn't permitted, but I thought, which part does it reference the sale of alcohol?
It's on the second page. It's a paragraph says alcohol. I just, personally, I didn't know. Do we allow that?
There would be a permit to put it in there.
So we don't allow the sale of alcohol in the town park for any, any venues or?
What about, uh, canad, or Canoe Fest? Do they still sell alcohol?
Uh, they have to get a permit, but we haven't had that. The Legion has kinda taken it out of it, so we haven't had that in recent years. Um, normally when you want to sell alcohol, you have to get some type of beverage permit, so.
So then in that case, we would allow the sale as long as they had a permit?
It's up to you guys. I don't know, but it could be something that maybe they might need to come and listen to.
I agree. I agree with you.
Just, I mean, cause the rest of.
I, I get what you're saying. It could be a situation where somebody wants to host an event down there. That would happen here, pardon me.
Well, it, it wasn't last year, but it was the year before for Canoe Fest. They, they did get a, Canoe Fest got a, um, an event, one day permit. Cause they were supposed to have craft beers. I, I think they did have somebody set up. It was just very small. Um, but they did have it one day.
If you have permission from the state, it'd be more than a day.
It's fine. Okay. And then the rest of the paragraph talks about, you can, can, can we have alcohol in the town park? I'm just asking cause I don't know. Cause this all talks about you can't have it if you're not twenty-one and, and sure compliance with state law. I just, I thought there was no alcohol allowed in the park at all.
So I think.
Is that wrong?
Gina says, right, what I had sent was an agreement that people were, for facility, where people were hosting wedding receptions and things like that. So that's because you, at least if you're gonna have fun, like you could have alcohol. Uh, so I think that's where a lot of this comes from is because it was a, I don't think it was a facility agreement, it was all geared towards.
Like a building?
A building. It's hosting events.
I see, okay.
I'm not sure about alcohol, but we do have a resolution that there's no tobacco. So maybe it shouldn't be either.
No smoking in the park?
That would stay in the law.
I'd go for you.
I'm not sure that that's, okay. Okay, so if it says no tobacco, I'm assuming it says, no, people aren't allowed to have alcohol in the park either. Is that, is that what we understand as the, that would be in our code somewhere, I assume, right? Anything? Okay. Okay, we'll look at the code a little closer about alcohol in the park. That was my only question. And then of course, my question was, is, um, can we, can we take and use the same verbiage for the golf course and for the shilling center and for the pool when we rent it out for those entities?
I think we could as long as we attach the list of rules for each facility. In my opinion, because there are different rules for other facility you're renting.
I mean, when someone rents the shilling center, do they sign an agreement, a rental agreement? And, and for the?
It's a very short rental agreement that we had. I'm not sure what the fire department is utilizing at this point. The pool also, we have a short residential agreement that has.
And do you have a, a short one as well?
We have a short rental agreement.
Okay.
So I think that we could utilize this if we come up with something that would work for everything and then we just have to have a separate rule sheet.
Sure. Attach it to the back. These are the rules for the golf course or whatever. Okay, okay. That sounds good. So we'll table this as well. Next is the shilling center contract. So, uh, at the last meeting, um, we tabled, uh, reducing the rates of the shilling center by half. Uh, so that, um, Dan and I could meet with Mark Shires to talk about the contract for this year. So last year was the first year we sent a contract with the fire department to manage the shilling center. And it ended in December and it is our fault that we have not renewed that, um, in a timely manner. But we have found out that, um, the fire department was charging different rates, uh, that were not approved by the council. Um, for different types of events, uh, and so, and they've already booked and collected money for people in twenty twenty-four for the events based off of the, um, based off of the fees that were in last year's contract. So, um, I think the understanding between Mark and Dan and I was that, um, we would let the contract and the prices ride for this year, but that we would make sure that in November, that we address the contract again. And decided on whether to reduce the rates at the end of this year since we're a little behind and people have already kinda paid. It wouldn't be fair to go back. So, um, with that being said, when we found out that there were, that the fire department was charging different rates from what the council had approved. Uh, we asked, uh, the fire department to go ahead and provide us what they thought that should be charged for different types of events. So we could include it in the contract, uh, so that everyone gets charged the same price. Because that's the whole purpose of having a contract is everybody knows what's in the contract. It's all advertised on our webpage and everybody gets charged the same amount. Um, so I think we're still waiting for that and so we don't have the final contract ready. And all it is, is including those, those, a couple, a couple of different chapters for different types of events that don't fall into the category from one to four, uh, hours of rentals. So, um, and we, we also found out that this, this twenty twenty-three, they actually rented, um, the shilling center only twenty-one times, not twenty-four. And last year we rented it twenty-nine times. So, I'm sorry, the year before it was twenty-nine times. So we can't say whether the reduction in the number of rentals is because of the price. Uh, until we lower the price and maybe the rentals will shoot through the roof. We won't know that until, um, we change the prices in twenty twenty-five. So that, that was the recommendation from the team. So it's, uh, I guess up to the council, if you guys want me to.
We just want to table it then?
I would like to table it until Mark gets us the, the, uh, the prices and the description of whatever they wanna, they, they charged people last year that wasn't in the contract.
I make a motion to table.
Okay, John made a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded on a favor. All opposed. Motion table, motion to table the contract. Okay, next is tablets for council.
I had asked, um, Randy to look into some tablets for council to use. Basically to access all of the documents from our, um, Brookfield, I've dot IN.gov domain emails. Also to let council members look at documents on a larger scale screen rather than their phones. So he sent me a couple of options, actually sent me one option of what he thought would be sufficient. Um, was a iPad and then a case. And if we bought five, one for each house or whatever, that would be a little under two thousand. And it would say, I honestly, and I probably wouldn't make any other paper copies, cause you guys could bring them with you. Look at it and save the, the copies also in paper, in truth.
Well, I think it also would allow the council members to use SharePoint, which I don't think that they use it now. And it is, um, a huge benefit for working and sharing documents all, you know, organized into one spot. So you're not searching through emails. Um, I, I, I find it to be very useful when I'm working with, uh, the department heads in Gina to use SharePoint.
I send the meeting documents. If the files are too large, like some of those Randolph Park Playground posts, I can't send because they're too, the files are too big. So I can't really attach them. I have to either zip it and send a link or, yeah, I think it'd just be easier if they would be in one place. And then, you know, we could all work together. Maybe Randy could give us a quick lesson on what we can do. I think it'd just be easier for everybody to be on the same page and have the documents in front of them.
It may be a longer lesson for me.
I have faith in you.
I mean, I just wanna say if, if, if we're gonna. I mean, I just want to say, if, if, if we're going to buy these, we just need the council to at least say that they'll use it. I mean, if we have council that say, I'm not going to use it, then it's kind of a waste. So, I mean, if we aren't going to use it, we don't need to buy it. It's just, it would be easier to work. But if you don't want to use it, just say it's no big deal.
If we're not going to have paper copies, we're going to have to pass them.
Rick?
I'm fine.
You'll use the iPad?
Yeah, my phone's at seven. There ain't never been updates.
So the question is, is these obviously will belong to the town and that, but we'll have them. So will we be allowed to take them home?
Yes, that would be my hope. I would just have to have you maybe, I don't know, put out a document or keep track of whatever.
What happens if we break them?
I mean, they're not, I'm talking about $300. I don't, I trust everyone. We'll take good care of them.
And do you have, it sounds, it looks like you want to say something.
No, I mean, the bigger thing that I run into is if, you know, if somebody has gotten a laptop or something like that through their work, by the time they leave that appointment or their term ends, usually the laptop becomes malfunctioning, obsolete, and it's, then you just do a resolution to declare the property worthless and, you know, take it out on a fee for it from the individual. It may be more along the lines of at the end.
If they want to keep it?
Right. And there's your process.
Well, my iPad works at home. It's 10 years old. It doesn't download any new updates or anything, but.
Well, assuming Ramsey said, and I don't know if everybody agrees, but most of you guys will not need it to modify documents. Maybe just review documents. And if you would need modifications, you could always ask us to make, you know, ask myself to make them or-
Get it on a computer?
Yeah.
So do you know, would this require us to change our Microsoft licenses? Or no, no, it wouldn't because ours are all just online anyway?
Correct.
Okay, ours, the cheap, are the cheapest ones. Okay, that's right. Okay. Okay. So-
The point you're stating too is all of those documents that I have, that he has, my goodies, everything will be there. If you click on that link, everything should be there. I don't know if this shows up like that for you.
Yeah. So I mean, I can access all of these files on my, on my phone. It's just so tiny. It's hard to see. But yes, I can do that with the app, with the Microsoft 365 app. So if there's no more questions, does anyone want to make a motion or can just move on?
I made a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the purchase of new Apple iPads for $379 apiece along with a caring case for $12.29, which is a total of $1,958.35 for six, for six, ah, for five.
Yeah, I remembered five, sorry.
Sorry. Times five. I'm sorry. It's 391.67 times five, which is a total of 1,958.35. John made a motion to approve this purchase. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Okay, next is the easement renewal with the U.S. Army Corps for the golf course. So this, as I read through all these documents, is a 30-year easement, and it just happens to be up in 2024. What luck do we have?
Yeah, just live it on whatever you're doing.
This is an eas, this is an easement for electric and water lines of 2,400 feet. And that's to bring that water from the lake up into our pond to use for irrigation. So that's what this easement is for, for those electric and water lines. So it looks like this cost is $8,500 for this easement? Is that like easement processing fees or something, or they do all the work and we just pay them the money and then we?
This is the U.S. government.
The cost includes payment for work products such as contract renewals, determinations of value, and review of land surveys maps and the descriptions. Please send a check.
It's not bad over the last year. It's probably out over 30 years.
So we don't have to actually do anything except write, write a check? Okay?
This was signed by our member 20, 20 years ago.
30.
30.
Yes, I know. Okay. Are there any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to fund this.
Renewed easement.
Fund this renewed easement?
I made that motion.
John made a motion to fund the easement for $8,500. Is there a second? All seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? There's nothing I need to sign, right, Gina?
No.
Okay. Next is building permit 1,000 for Brookfield Church of Christ. This is for a barn that they've already built. So Tim is not here, but this is a barn 65 by 54 by 24 on 11016 Fairview Avenue. They received a permit from the county without receiving a permit from the town. From what I understand, all the setbacks have been, are within the standards and they don't have to ask for awareness. So this meets what we normally look at as just setbacks.
Make a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve Brookfield Church of Christ for a youth building. Is there a second? All seconded. Are there any other questions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Next is building permit 1001, Jeanette Helfler, Sheer Design. This is for a 16 by 20 addition for more tanning space at 729 Mill Street. And this is just a one-story, not a two-story addition. It just fills in their building, so it's more on a square.
Yeah, it's currently landscaping, and I was just going to go square off the building that exists.
And obviously, this meets the setbacks because it's already within her property.
Make a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the 16 by 20 addition for Sheer Designs at 729 Mill Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? So this is good for one year? Okay, next.
Does that have to make copies? And then if you or somebody opposite pick that up tomorrow? Or whatever is convenient, but I'll have it ready for you tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next is building permit 1002, Curtis Grumison and Lucas Parking Lot. This is at 1126th Street in Brookfield. Parking and outdoor seating. This will be a concrete parking spaces, concrete sidewalks, concrete patio, grass landscaping in all other areas. So this is in the area that was blighted here a few years ago that they purchased from the redevelopment commission back in May of '22.
The only question I have is, I was carrying the redevelopment commission at the time, and the reason that they didn't do anything with parking up there is the engineers said they had to have retaining walls. And it was going to cost, I think, a half million dollars or something like that for four or five parking spaces. So we said no. I don't know if it's been engineered. There was a retaining wall there prior to the turn down of the buildings.
So in March of 2022, I've got the meeting minutes from the redevelopment commission. And this is where they decided to go ahead and sell the land to them. And the notes say, the minutes say, discussion of $750 for the, for the price of the, of the land, but must finish the sidewalk and retaining wall must be done by the end of the year, which is in 2022. And then it says, not eligible for sidewalk improvement project with property at this price. So one of the things in the application, I think, is they talked about applying for the, or, okay, maybe that was in the redevelopment portion. It's just these two pages for this application? There was nothing else?
That's all I saw. Yeah.
Okay. I think you sent something else from when they initially applied to redevelopment. I think they talked about applying for the sidewalk improvement. So redevelopment said that they don't, they're not eligible for the sidewalk improvement because they sold the property at such a low rate, which is a lot lower than, I think, the estimate for the appraisals at the time was, I feel like it was $10,000 and $12,000 were the two. So I think the law is normally you can't go below that or you have to go with the lowest number, but they went with $750 instead of the lowest appraisal, just so they could, you know, get rid of the property, which is good. But anyway, this schematic here basically says that we're going to give up all the parking spaces on, on the south side of Sixth Street for this permit, and I don't, that we give up any, any more public parking.
Was there some type of agreement between redevelopment and them? Because I guess I would just recommend that ask redevelopment to weigh in because what the proposal is doesn't match the response of RP that they gave redevelopment. I mean, they gave redevelopment and RP, you know, a response to requests or proposals and said, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and that's not matched by our building permits. So I'm wondering if redevelopment said, we accept your proposal, but if you don't do it, you say you're not moving any of the property back. That's what I would wonder.
I, I don't think, we'll let redevelopment answer those questions.
Right.
So-
So I would guarantee.
I made a motion to table.
John made a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded. All in favor?
Yes, I think so.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Seconded and more discussion. Please feel free to interrupt if you have, can you go ahead and turn your mic on? Thank you.
It seems like this is a safety issue as well backing out right here next to this corner. You have trucks that pull up here and unload, and you have someone pulling out here backing out. It seems like it's a concern. And if it's concrete, you possibly could run into the same problem you did on Seventh Street, drains, and it might end up in here yours. Maybe they can work on something, put the retaining wall back the way it was with the same elevation as the one across the street and put the lot up there, you know, put a railing around it and access it coming through the alley this way and have it parking up here.
I, I, I think I read on the deed that they do have the easement to, to enter in through the alley.
And here is it?
Yeah.
Giving up the parking spots?
And it's a safety issue.
The, you have to have, I assume you have to have easement going into the street, wouldn't you? Like a, like an apron here?
Would we have to?
Backing out onto Sixth Street, you're going across the sidewalk. Well, no sidewalk right now. But, I mean, is there another permit somewhere floating around it?
No.
Just this?
This is, this is where they start.
Okay.
Okay. So we're all in favor of tabling this until we hear from redevelopment?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion carried? So I guess we'll ask someone from redevelopment from the time that, someone that was on the board in 2022? We'll see if Todd can come in.
I'm not sure if I remember. I knew Todd and maybe Aaron Lefenwell were the ones that were working.
Yeah. So Aaron was the one that did the negotiation with them to see if they could come up with a price they could both agree with. So that was Daryl, Flash Puller, Aaron Lefenwell, Brooke Lefenwell, Todd Thackeray, and Chuck Campbell.
So you want me to reach out to Todd?
Yeah, Todd. See if he can come at the next meeting?
Okay.
Thank you. Next is building permit 1004, Evan Stitchford for an addition. Stitchford. This is at 520 Long Street. This is a residential, single-family home. I'm not really sure how to describe this from the pictures. Oh, this structure says it's 30 by 10?
I'm, I'm here on his behalf.
Oh.
I'm Ryan Sifler. That's my son.
Oh, great. Thank you. Good, because Tim's not here, our building guy.
He said the addition on the back right now is sitting on, he's sitting on dirt and it's on an old patio when they built it. And he's going to tear it off and just go straight back from the sides of the house.
Oh, so there's something already on the back. He's going to tear it off?
Yeah, it's like they had a porch on the back and they closed it. He's going to tear that rotten porch off and just go straight back on the sides. So it should be the same easements on each side of the house, just go back a little bit farther.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I didn't get that. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have questions on this one or?
Everything is okay?
I, I'm not sure because Tim is not here.
I made a motion that we approve.
Uh-
I second.
John made a motion to approve.
It's, it's right. I, I don't see the problem. I mean, I ain't the engineer, but where it's at makes everyone a problem.
And Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? So now you're going to take this to the county, right? Yeah?
I'm not sure how it works.
I think he, he did have a copy, that last page. I think he has a copy of the county's draw that he submitted.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
We were kind of, he had to come back to us. He told we had to come to us and then proceed with it.
I see. So he's good to go? Okay. So this, this lasts for one year from the time we sign it tonight?
Okay. Thank you.
You can pick it up at the office tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the preserving main street grant draw request number three.
So I got a claim request from Kirby and ARRA. We have two invoices that we're submitting on behalf of Ratio for their services. One was for $4,000 for the, the 2nd of January, and then another one in December for $4,000. So our total request from the state will be $8,000. And we do not have any construction claims yet from the corporate. So these are just for the invoices for Ratio this time. Um, so these are just for the invoices for Ratio at this time.
Is there a motion to approve?
No, you can just ignore it.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Did you send an email about some, about some, some change orders or something?
Yeah, so the, um, that was from, uh, Dave Kroll, the, uh, from Ratio, so he, um, just is alerting us for, for possible change orders, um, in the future. So yes, and that's gonna happen throughout the whole, and that the, so far, this, this contract, this grant is supposed to end on the first of June. Um, so that's what they're working towards, but, um, there's a, there's a big possibility that it will, will be asking for an extension. Uh, but right now, we're still going on the first of June, so. Um, all in favor of approving the eight thousand dollars? All opposed, motion carried? And next is, oh, thank you. So you guys will sign, you'll date here and then sign.
If I can serve it.
Um, oh, that's next, okay, so. Oh, okay. Do you wanna? So this is awarding the CCM, uh, the Community Crossing Grant for Sixth Street and Eleventh Street.
Yeah, I'll write the motion somewhere.
And are they the lowest cost?
Yes.
Okay. And all their paperwork's in order? Wonderful. Any questions for Rocky?
I made a motion to approve where?
John made a motion to approve O'Mearan, hold on a second, for two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for Community Crossing Grant two thousand twenty-three dash two. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried? So we all need to sign right up here? And last is the, uh, annual financial report submission date.
So I need to submit my annual financial report by the end of February, February twenty-ninth. Um, state board of accounts always would like for council to review prior, but I don't have another meeting and I'm not done with it. So I wanted to know if you, if you guys will tentatively, if I send it to you, will you give yourself a couple of days? Is that enough to review things, or you give me a few days? I want, I hope to have it to you by Friday.
So do you need us to have a special meeting, or?
No, not a special meeting, but after, upon review, if you give me a date, uh, a cutoff date to get it to you, and then I can submit it, so you guys know if you don't get questions back to me before I submit it, I'm gonna submit it on the twenty-first.
Wouldn't it be easier then?
I'm hoping to get it to you by Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna do my best.
Okay.
Okay. And then if I do permission, I can submit by the twenty-eighth. I'm about to do that.
Are you gonna buy me a coffee and do a nuts while?
Yes, absolutely, we're gonna celebrate together.
Um, is there a motion to allow Gina to submit the annual financial report by the end of the month, as long as she gets it to us by the twenty-third or twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
You need a motion for that? I made that motion.
John made a motion to allow Gina to submit the financial report by the end of the month, as long as she gets it to us beforehand. Is there a second? I seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried? Okay, um, I just have, uh, two things. One is, so Saint Michael's School asked me about closing, uh, their parking lot area from Third Street. And I don't even know what the other, that other street is on the other side of their building. Is that, what is that street? Uh, where their parking lot is? Ha, ha?
Also.
Ha?
Yeah.
Okay. So what they wanted to do is just put up temporary, from my understanding, they just wanted to put up temporary barriers so that people didn't, couldn't come around the school building into the parking lot. And then people couldn't come from High Street around the other side of the building into the parking lot only during school hours, when the kids are using that, that area to go to the playground. So it's between nine and three. Um, we would not have to do anything, as far as I understand, but, um, if, if we agree to this, then, uh, Rocky, I'd just ask you to go talk to them, to make sure that we're, we're on the same page, but, um, just between nine and three for safety reasons.
I made a motion to that, but.
John made a motion to approve the temporary closure of Saint Michael's between nine and three other parking lot.
Yes, sir.
Rick seconded, all in favor, all opposed? Great, so Rocky, talk to them and just let us know what they said.
Do you have, like, contact?
Michelle Brown.
Michelle Brown.
Yeah. Thank you. And then last but not least is the executive session. So at our last executive session, I felt like we wanted to have another executive session. And I wanted to see if anybody was free. I asked, um, Andy if he was free, and he wondered if we were available during the day at any point.
So, I mean, right now, the earliest you can do is the twenty-third. I'm out of town twenty-seventh through the second.
Is it person now again?
Yeah, it's the, what we talked about last time. We guys said, "Let's get together one more time."
So, like I said, I'm out of town twenty-seventh to the second, and then, uh, next Monday is your town council.
Yeah, sweet.
Do you wanna just do it where your town council? On the fourth?
I'm just gonna, you think, Lee?
Well, it depends, I don't know. I mean, it depends on what everybody has to say about everything. I don't know, I, I kinda feel like maybe having it before the council meeting might not be a good idea. Cause we, I'm not sure how long this is gonna take. I don't know, I mean, I guess we could stop it and then start it after, if you wanna do that. Nobody wants to do that, okay?
Well, yeah, of course.
Oh, you can't? Stop an executive and then start it again?
I mean, you could, you could, but you wouldn't be able to take any action at that regular rate.
Oh, I know.
I'd rather do this during the day than do it before.
I, I'm okay with during the day, but Dan is, Dan is, I'm not, not ready for primetime yet, I don't think.
He could do that early and just call it off. With the appointment.
Andy, do you wanna just, just move it to after the town meeting, like the first week in March?
I don't think you can do that.
No?
No, it don't matter.
Oh, okay, I thought you were gonna say that.
I mean, what about like Monday morning?
The fourth?
Twenty-sixth.
Oh. Yeah, that's. It's Monday.
I mean, I could be here by now.
Oof, gosh. How about ten?
I have kids, I have.
Oh, that's fine. I just got, I'll probably go to Grand Island, I gotta take it to school, that's why I said, I mean, nine, it, it could be a ten.
Oh, no.
Anything, anything.
It's fine, I'll, I'll, I'll drink a lot of coffee, nine, that's fine.
Anything after, me and nine can do that.
Good.
Nine is fine. Do, do, do you know when Dan's having a surgery?
He's already had it.
He already had it, okay, so.
The twenty-sixth.
I don't know, I stay.
At one a.m.?
Yeah, and you're doing yours. Just like with the last one.
Okay.
I just said that you go check on him.
Okay, so February twenty-sixth at nine a.m. Thank you, that's all I have. Does anyone have anything else? Anything from the public? If there's, I see no more business to come before the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
John made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carried, meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. Thank you.